Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda, first selectmen's report, I have nothing formal tonight, just more of an update, preparing for our February 2nd meeting, finalizing the budget, but we're going to add something different to that. I'm going to be presenting to the board at our meeting on the 16th, a full infrastructure plan for the next five years, including a financing package. I'm going to run that by town council, to see if that is something that we can actually put out for referendum to lock the town in. As you know, we've been doing a lot of long-term planning with fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 21 being our big target years. I really want to lock this in for not only our streets, but more importantly, our buildings, which have been ignored for many years. I'm expecting in the next month or two, a final report from the standing building committee, at least to give us the place to start from. So I'm going to make sure that there's a funding package in line to go along with those recommendations. So I'll have some updates at our February 2nd meeting, and then the full presentation of the full report on our meeting on the 16th. So with that, that closes first selectmen's report, we'll move on to item number six, which is set the public hearing for February 16, 2016, at 6:45 PM regarding the 2016 small cities grant application. So with that, in your packets, you have something that I will read, the notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the Town of Seymour will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, February 16, 2016, at Town Hall, 1 First Street, Seymour, Connecticut, 06483, at 6:45 PM to discuss the fiscal year 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program, and to solicit citizen input. Maximum award limits are $700,000 for public facilities, $700,000 for public housing, modernization of 25 units or less, or $800,000 for 26 units and over, $500,000 for infrastructure, $400,000 for housing rehab program for single towns, $500,000 for two-town consortium, and $600,000 for three or more towns, $25,000 for planning-only grants, $50,000 for economic development activities, and $500,000 for urgent need. Major activity categories are acquisition, housing rehab, public housing modernization, community facilities, public service, and economic development. Projects funded with CB, CDBG allocations must carry out at least one of three national objectives, benefit to low to moderate income persons, elimination of slums and blight, or meeting urgent community development needs. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain citizens' views on the town's community development and housing needs, and review and discuss specific project activities in the area of housing, economic development, or community facilities, which could be part of the town's application for funding. Also, the public hearing will be to give citizens an opportunity to make their comments known on the program, and for approval of the program income reuse plan. If you are unable to attend the public hearing, you may direct written comments to W. Kurt Miller, First Selectman, 1 First Street, Seymour, Connecticut, 06483, or you may telephone First Selectman Miller at 203-888-2511. In addition, information may be obtained at the above address between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM Monday through Thursday. The Board of Selectmen on behalf of the Town of Seymour anticipates applying for a maximum grant amount of $400,000 under the housing rehabilitation category. In addition, the Town of Seymour will create a revolving loan fund with program income, principal and interest generated from the grant for housing rehabilitation loan program. The Town of Seymour promotes fair housing, and makes all programs available to low and moderate income families regardless of age, race, color, religion, sex, national origin, sexual preference, marital status, or handicap. If you are unable to attend the public hearing, you may direct written comments to W. Kurt Miller, First Selectman, 1 First Street, Seymour, Connecticut, 06483, or you may telephone First Select Miller at 203-888-2511. In addition, information may be obtained at the above address between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:30 PM Monday through Thursday. The hearing will also review and discuss the town's prior small cities projects, including any currently opened or underway. All are encouraged to attend. The hearing is accessible to the handicap, and the disabled person requiring special assistance, or non-English speaking person should contact W. Kurt Miller, ADA Coordinator, at 203-888-2511 at least five days prior to the hearing. Actually, the ADA Coordinator for the Town of Seymour is Dieter Caruso. So we'll just make that change for the record. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to set the public hearing as presented for February 16, 2016, at 6:45 PM in the Normer Drummer Room of Town Hall. Motion by Len, second by Karen, is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda is item number seven. To consider and act upon a resolution making certain determinations and delegations in connection with borrowing authorized to finance and appropriation for costs with respect to construction of a greenway trail along the Nogatuck River approximately from the Tenew Dam bypass channel and Fishway Park to the Bank Street Bridge, and related improvements and amenities. So I'm going to read the attached resolution, and this, all this resolution is doing is giving myself the ability to sign with regards to the projects and to take action on them, since we've already been, the projects and the financing have already been approved. So whereas the Town of Seymour by resolution adopted by the Board of Selectmen on December 15, 2015, acting in lieu of a special town meeting held on that date at which the quorum requirement was not met, approved appropriated $900,000 for construction of a greenway trail, and authorized the issuance of bonds or notes and temporary notes in the amount of $325,000 to finance in part said appropriations, and whereas said resolution authorized the Board of Selectmen to determine the source of funding for the local share of the appropriation, and to delegate to appropriate, delegate to appropriate officers of the town certain determinations and actions in connection with the issuance of bonds or notes and temporary notes, now therefore resolve that the local share of said appropriations shall be funded through the issuance of bonds, notes, or temporary notes of the Town of Seymour, and the First Selectmen and the Treasurer are authorized to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities, form, and other details of such bonds, notes, and temporary notes, to bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption of interest on such bonds, notes, and temporary notes from federal income taxation, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years, to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of such bonds, notes, and temporary notes, provide secondary market disclosure information, to sell the bonds, notes, and temporary notes at all at public or private sales, to execute and deliver the bonds, notes, and temporary notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to sell, issue, and deliver the bonds, notes, and temporary notes. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
Aye.
Motion by Len, second by Al, is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Item number eight. To consider and act upon a resolution making certain determinations and delegations in connection with borrowing authorized to finance and appropriation for costs with respect to improvements to Rymon Street, Old Drive, Clifton Street, and Persian Street, including reconstruction of and improvements to Rymon Street and a portion of Old Drive, sidewalks and curbing replacement on Clifton Street and Persian Street, related improvements and amenities. Whereas the Town of Seymour by resolution adopted by the Board of Selectmen on December 15, 2015, acting in lieu of the special town meeting held on that date at which the quorum requirement was not met, appropriated $2,410,000 for improvements to Rymon Street, Old Drive, Clifton Street, and Persian Street, and authorized the issuance of bonds or notes and temporary notes in the amount of $286,000 to finance in part said appropriations, and whereas said resolutions authorized the Board of Selectmen to determine the source of funding for the local share of the appropriation, and to delegate to appropriate officers of the town certain determinations and actions in conjunction with the issuance of bonds and notes and temporary notes, now therefore resolve that the local share of said appropriations shall be funded through the issuance of bonds, notes, or temporary notes of the town, and the First Selectmen and the Treasurer are authorized to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities, form, and other details of such bonds, notes, and temporary notes, to bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption of interest on such bonds, notes, and temporary notes from federal taxation, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings in the United States in future years, to make representation, enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of such bonds, notes, and temporary notes, to provide secondary market disclosure information, to sell bonds, notes, and temporary notes to public, at public or private sale, to execute and deliver the bonds, notes, and temporary notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to sell, issue, or deliver the bonds, notes, and temporary notes. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
Aye.
Motion by Stephen, second by Al, is there any discussion?
Quick question.
Fire away.
Just refresh my memory, I know this is just to authorize you to sign the bonds and whatnot, but which section of Rymon Street is included in this? I can't recall.
That is from Old Drive, so essentially from 67 all the way up to the town hall.
Is this the full?
This is everything.
Full reconstruction of Rymon Street?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Item number nine. To consider and act upon a resolution making certain determinations and delegations in conjunction with borrowing authorized to finance and appropriation for costs with respect to various town facilities, recreational, public works, and public safety equipment acquisition and improvements, including acquisition of a bucket truck and related equipment for use by the Public Works Department, acquisition of a large plow blade for use by the Public Works Department, acquisition, installation of computer hardware and software in conjunction with the creation of a community services website for the town, road paving at French Park, acquisition of portable radios for use by the Police Department, acquisition of mobile radios for use by the Fire Department, oil tank removal at the Community Center, Public Works Department Building, and the Board of Education Administrative Building, and construction of a dog park at a site to be determined by the Board of Selectmen. So I'll read the following resolution. Whereas the Town of Seymour by resolution adopted by the Board of Selectmen on December 15, 2015, acted in lieu of a special town meeting held on that date at which the quorum requirement was not met, appropriated $232,847 for various town facility, recreational, public works, and public safety equipment acquisitions and improvements, and authorized the issue of bonds or notes and temporary notes in an amount not to exceed $232,847 to finance appropriations, and whereas said resolutions authorized by the Board of Selectmen to delegate to appropriate officers of the town certain determinations and actions in conjunction with the issuance of such notes or bonds and temporary notes, now therefore resolve that the First Selectmen and the Treasurer are authorized to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities, form, and other details of such bonds, notes, and temporary notes, to bind the town pursuant to such representation and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption of interest on the bonds, notes, and temporary notes from federal income taxation, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years, to make representation and enter into written agreement for the benefits of holders of the bonds, notes, and temporary notes, to provide secondary market disclosure information, to sell the bonds, notes, and temporary notes at public or private sale, to execute and deliver the bonds, notes, and temporary notes, and perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to sell, issue, and deliver the bonds, notes, and temporary notes. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
Almost seven.
Motion by Len, second by Al, is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Item number 10. To consider and act upon a resolution making certain determinations and delegations in conjunction with borrowing authorized to finance and appropriation for costs with respect to the installation of a simulcast upgrade to the town's mobile and portable radio communication systems at the antenna tower sites in Progress Avenue, Seymour, and at Quaker Farms Road in Oxford, in order to provide 100 percent radio coverage throughout the town. So we'll go to the final resolution, thankfully. Whereas the Town of Seymour by resolution adopted by the Board of Selectmen on December 15, 2015, acting in lieu of the special town meeting held on that date at which the quorum requirement was not met, appropriated $475,000 for costs with respect to the installation of a simulcast upgrade for the town's mobile portable radio communication system facilities, and authorized the issuance of bonds or notes and temporary notes in the amount of $475,000 to finance said appropriation, and now therefore resolve that the First Selectmen and the Treasurer are authorized to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities, form, and other details of such bonds, notes, and temporary notes, to bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption of interest on such bonds, notes, and temporary notes from federal income taxation, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years, to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of such bonds, notes, and temporary notes, to provide secondary market disclosure information, to sell bonds, notes, and temporary notes at public or private sale, to execute and deliver the bonds, notes, and temporary notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to sell, issue, and deliver bonds and notes and temporary notes. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
A motion.
Motion by Len, second by Al, is there any discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. I'd like to thank Doug Gillette for that fun time. Okay, item number 11. Discussion regarding potential regionalization of services with Ansonia. As I mentioned at our last meeting, we have been looking at ways in which Seymour can provide more regionalization. As you know, through the COG, we have a shared services committee which I chair, so we're looking at all 19 communities to see how we can share equipment and things. As you know, we already entered into agreement with Oxford and Beacon Falls to share some equipment. During these conversations, Seymour was afforded the opportunity to share a grant with the city of Ansonia about studying our WPCA and how we can better merge those. Those conversations led into Beacon Falls as well joining us in that. During those conversations, which I had with, well, first I should introduce Sheila O'Malley and John Marini from Ansonia. With conversations with them on behalf of Mayor Cassetti, we looked, or identified three other potential areas where we would like to consider merging services. Those areas are our building inspector's office, engineering, and animal control. So we are in the early initial phases of all of those, but it's something that we will be discussing over the next two to three weeks, and we hope to have this finalized by the end of February. This still needs to be discussed and approved by both communities, but we just wanted to at least put the framework out there of what we're looking at, allow you folks to ask questions as we put this together before we bring it back to both boards for final vote. John and Sheila are here to show Ansonia support, at least initially to the idea of regionalization. We're not saying that these three are what we're going to do. There could be other things, there could be more, there could be less, but we just wanted to show the support in each community, and I plan to go to the Board of Alderman meeting in the beginning of February to show again Seymour's support and interest in working together on this. Again, just wanted to put that out there, take everyone's temperature, I know it's something that folks had wanted me to do, but we're starting to move this forward, but I wanted to see where everybody stood, see what questions anybody has we can try to answer, and then just kind of take it from there. So I'll put it out to questions.
Could you imagine three areas again, besides the dog park?
No, it's going to be animal control.
Oh, animal control.
Engineering.
Yep.
And the building inspector's office.
Okay. Thank you.
We haven't decided on a formal model yet. What it may be is sharing staff, each town paying their own cost for usage on an hourly basis, that may be where we begin, and then we look to see if it makes sense to bring these positions on full-time, and at that point, splitting costs and things like that. We're trying to improve services to both communities. I mean, we do do a lot of projects jointly through the COG, whether it be grants and things, so it makes sense to have some of these positions together and in tune somewhat. So I mean, we already share an attorney, or a law firm, I should say, so I mean, we do have some history in Ansonia with these merged services. Someone else?
Yeah, you know, I don't know, maybe Rich, you can answer this question better, or maybe John or Sheila, if you want to jump in, feel free, but with regard to, you know, something like the building inspector, I know that the building inspector obviously has to take into account each community's individual zoning regulations, the ordinances and whatnot.
Mm-hmm.
How have other communities actually integrated the differences between the communities and as far as training and that sort of thing? Are you going to actually, do you envision us sharing specific staffers that go between the towns, or would we have kind of a separation? I mean, how would it work logistically, I guess?
Right now, what we're looking at is each community will maintain their own back office staff, so for processing of, whether it be paperwork, permits, things like that. What we would be sharing is the actual building inspector functions themselves, which should basically follow state statute and state building code, so I don't think there would be too many variations from town to town on that. We currently use our building inspector about 25 hours a week, which is what we have Jim. Insonia, and in Jim's case, they'd be looking at picking up about another 20 or so. So between the two communities, it would be basically full-time work, but at this point, without any benefits or anything attached to it. So I think there would be good value for both, and here's Mayor Cassetti.
How's everybody doing?
So, right on cue, Mayor.
Yes, right on.
It's like they text you in the car to tell you to come in.
Yeah.
So that's, that's kind of what we're looking at. Same thing with engineering. You know, we have appointed engineers in Seymour, that being Brian Asteriak for roads and drainage, and Don Smith for buildings and special projects. Ansonia will be looking to use both Brian and Don for that.
We currently use Don in our buildings now.
So, so there's some overlap already, so I think it's going to make sense for the two communities. Again, this allows us to start looking at does having, you know, full-time people make sense without us having to commit to full-time employees? So it gives us the opportunity to kind of test the waters before we jump in with both feet. It gives either town or the opportunity, if they don't like it, if it's not working for them, to back out, and they're simply pulling back on their half of the work. All, the two engineers are very aware, as is Jim Baldwin, of what we're looking at, what we're talking about. They're all, they've met with Seymour, they'll be meeting with Ansonia just to make sure that they're comfortable with that, and then we'll move forward. Hopefully, we'll have everything up and running by the first of March, if again, the Aldermen in Ansonia and the Selectmen here in Seymour are agreeable to that. Animal control will be a little bit different. Ansonia currently has a full-time animal control officer. Seymour has a part-time animal control officer and a part-time assistant, so we would be looking to merge those three into one department, taking care of the animal control needs. The biggest issue we need to discuss is the actual facility. Seymour has a shelter, Ansonia has a shelter, Ansonia's shelter is in, if you want to jump in.
I mean, I could even budget this year to remodel it, but I don't know if we're going to be able to do it, because we've got some other projects that we're going to do.
Right. So, Ansonia has money available for that, Seymour has money aside as well, so one of the things that we're going to ask Don Smith, the shared engineer, to look at Seymour's animal, animal shelter, and take a look at what could possibly be done for $100,000 to upgrade the facility to handle the two communities. So I think that would be, serve the best for both communities, but again, that's going to take a little bit longer than the other two, but we're certainly heading in that direction.
Well, I can say, I mean, I, at a higher level, I think this is a great idea. I think regionalization in general with the local communities around us are, is certainly the best approach to trying to find efficiencies and trying to find ways to work together on some of these different things that we all do, but not necessarily as well as we should or as efficiently as we should. So I thank you for coming down, you know, Mayor Cassetti, and John, and Sheila, that's, you know, very happy to see you here, and, you know, from my perspective at least, I think this is a great idea.
I also want to let you know that when we apply for grants, we're going in double with two towns, our kids will get the grants are going to be real high, real high, so there's going to be more money available.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think this mutually would be a great benefit to both our municipalities.
You know, we have a lot of other things that people may not even be aware of with mutual aid with our police department, mutual aid with our ambulance association, we work together on VEMS, so, you know, there's already a lot of that taking place, this is just going to add to it and help, help move it forward. I think this is the beginning of many more that we're going to see, maybe not necessarily just with Ansonia, but I think throughout the COG in general, particularly with equipment and other specialty services, so.
I want to thank the First Selectmen and the Board for considering this.
Oh, no, thank you for, for partnering and being open and receptive. You started it with allowing us to jump in on the WPCA grant, so that's kind of what, what facilitated that, so. Any questions for me or Mayor Cassetti while we have them? He likes to answer questions, too.
Yeah, yeah, I have a few questions, but I can't.
I don't have any questions, I just want to kind of echo what Len said, and I think we really need to, I think this is a great start, particularly with the animal control department, that's something that I think this town needs, should have done a while ago, but this is great that we're looking to address it now. I think it can only benefit both communities and, you know, any other communities that we even can get involved, not necessarily on the animal control, but any kind of, I'm all for regionalization on anything we can share, particularly if we have part-time employees or part-time services. It's just, it's just a great thing, and again, I thank Mayor Cassetti for coming down here and showing his support as well.
Anybody else? No? Perfect. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sheila. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 12. Discussion, take possible action regarding LED streetlight conversion. When last we left, streetlight conversion, this process began in 1984. Rory was working on the RFP with Rich, so Rory has some stuff that he wants to hand out and then go through and give us an update. So Rory, I'll turn it over to you.
I, I'm with you already. It's four pages that seem to start in the middle of nowhere. Basically, because we've been speaking to these contractors for so long now, we actually got them to submit sample RFPs, and then we went through the initial proposals that they had given us, and kind of took the best of each one, and what we thought best suited our needs. And the reason that I've given you the pages that I have is this sort of, I guess summarizes what the project would actually entail, and some of it, if you guys have input, I would be very happy to incorporate it. But essentially, we're going to ask them, they're all offering the same basic services, right? They're going to do the audit that we had talked about, they'll be in charge of installation, and then eventually, maintenance of the systems, but it's just certain aspects of it that we want to make sure are included. Some didn't explicitly offer it, so in the other pages of the RFP, it covers what if you can't provide certain services. Some of them we want to include as options, because again, maybe not all of them can implement them, maybe we don't want to implement them, but we'd like to have a price, just in case. So the first highlighted section is about the financing options, there are several different options that we have, we're going to ask them to prepare scenarios for us, and that could be, and this is not to say that they're even things that we're considering, but we'd like to see the numbers for. but we'd like to see the numbers for self-funding it, if we could figure out a way to do that, for bonding it, for tax exempt municipal leasing, but we asked, I put in there, because one of them promised it to us, a positive cash flow would be looked upon very favorably if they can reach that. We want them to, if you recall, I had mentioned there are smart controls for these lights that are available, involves the installation of a separate piece of hardware with each light, that may not be something that we want town-wide. I don't think the streetlights in my neighborhood require security cameras or any kind of fancy things, so that is what we want to include as an option. We'd like to see it with a per fixture cost, so that we can implement it where we want, and then also just to do the whole town, just to see what that looks like. Several of them offer savings guarantees, so we'd like to see that, that's always nice, if we have a guarantee on it. And then just to kind of cover ourselves, there are some things about, see, no fewer than two crews at all times, just to ensure that once they give us a timetable table, they can adhere to it and there's no staffing issues. We want to make sure that when they are doing the installation, all of the old high-pressure sodium bulbs that they are removing are properly secured, so we're asking them to remove them or at least secure them daily. We want, once the installation has been completed, they all have some form of light planning involved, making sure everything's optimized, but we want them to duplicate their photo-metrics at the end to ensure that they've actually done what they say they're going to. We want to make sure that the GIS mapping that they conduct is compatible with our own system. For the maintenance, you know, not that Eversource is extremely quick to replace the lights, but if they're gonna be doing the emergency maintenance, which Eversource would be a little better with, one of them quoted us two-hour response time, and that's not two hours to get it repaired, but two hours to get it underway. We'd like to see that. We'd like to see seven days for regular outages, if there's some sort of malfunction within a seven-day period. And then, to make sure that this is remaining cost-effective, we're asking them for annual reporting, that we know how many calls there are per year, what's the price per call, how does that work out on a per fixture basis? But, I mean, the, in terms of input for you, I mean, this is, I just finished this draft yesterday, I went through it with Tony this morning, Rich hasn't even seen it yet, so there's still a lot of work to be done before we put this out, and it will come before you again before we do so, but mostly in terms of the smart controls, you know, we don't really have an idea on the price, maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty thousand additionally, to put it throughout the town, that seems like a lot for maybe not so much utility at the moment. Could it pay off in the future, possibly? I don't know, but just to think about that, whether you'd like to see it universal, if there are certain things you'd like to see in certain areas of town. We had talked about Wi-Fi downtown, maybe some special services up in the industrial park, so any input on that would be welcome. Preference towards financing options, if you guys have any? Again, we're gonna ask them to prepare several scenarios anyway, but just, we can tell them that that is what we're leaning towards anyway. And I guess, you know, any other recommendation that you have, folks, would be welcome. That's where we're at.
Questions? When do you need recommendations by? Do you and Rich have a preference? I want to see you guys put everything together, and then you get a bunch of recommendations after the fact, I'd rather.
After Tony and I went, I want to clean up some of the language that I put in before I give it to Rich, and then, I'm not a lawyer, so some of the things might be problematic, so I don't know what you need.
Was it if I give the selectmen, if I give everybody a week? So by next Tuesday? Do you have any comments or responses to Rory? Is that okay? And then he can in turn clean up any necessary language, get that to Rich. Rich, that'll give you two days to get that set, so hopefully we can approve the RFP at our February second meeting. Is that same doable to everyone? Len?
Yep.
I saw you reaching for your button, I thought you had.
I actually have a, I have one recommendation, I think I had mentioned it previously.
If you can actually include guaranteed savings, that would be much preferable from my point of view.
Yeah, I know, again, they basically, this is based off of, for the CCM RFQ, they all submitted their qualifications, and that had sort of general, the general program that they had followed with the other municipalities, and then they also submitted proposals specifically to Seymour. So it's all of those kind of wrapped into one. Some of them offered guaranteed savings, it looked like, with certain financing options, where.
At the very least, maybe get guaranteed energy savings.
Yeah, absolutely.
You don't know what the rates are gonna be at some point, you know, down the road, but at least we can know we're saving thirty percent, and if they don't deliver thirty percent savings.
Yeah.
Then there has to be some kind of a repercussion. I do have one question that's completely unrelated to this, this is solid, you know, solid work here. It was brought to my attention with regard to the LED lights, that there is at least one potential drawback, particularly in the wintertime, and I think it was, it might have been Sean who actually mentioned this.
What's Sean?
When it snows, because there's no heat coming off the LEDs, and the snow doesn't melt, you don't get the light coming down into the street.
Yeah.
What do they do?
So one of these, you know, we met with two of these companies within the last month, and we actually asked them that because it had come up. One of them has done a lot of work in Canada, and so we asked them that, and they said, that's not something that we had an issue with. I can reach out to them again and see if they, to the others.
Thank you.
All right, just one thing, this, I think, is great, everything we have here, but you said this is kind of like a best of, so kind of a samples. What do you think the odds are, I guess just in your opinion, of getting, you know, approaching, getting this complete list when the time comes to actually have the project completed? Was there a lot of discrepancies between the companies? You know, maybe we're gonna sacrifice some things that, you know, maybe we'll feel are important to go with other important factors, because I would really like to see what we're gonna be losing out on if we, you know, if we go with certain aspects of this.
And that's something I think I already mentioned, but if not, you know, the lowest bidder on this project may not be the best, especially, you know, one of them had nothing at all about smart controls. So if that's something we're interested in, they may be completely disqualified, and everything else about their bid may be great, but if we want that and the company doesn't provide it, you know, maybe we could work out a different scenario where they come in and do that portion, but I would say two out of the three were pretty similar, and I think if we have a little bit of flexibility in terms of, you know, if we require, you know, I put in here a ten-year savings guarantee, I don't know if that's realistic, if we put in over the course of the payback period, that's a little more realistic. You know, we may not, especially if we go with smart controls and that's an additional cost, be able to stay cash positive, so we have some flexibility with that, but really, we're gonna have to wait and see what comes back. You know, there are provisions built in that if you can't meet every requirement, you're not automatically disqualified, so.
Okay, any other questions for Rory or Rich? Okay, so comments to Rory by next Tuesday. Rory and Rich will then get that turned around and have it available for us for final approval on February second. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All right, moving along. Item number thirteen, appointments. We have three appointments this evening. Tim Willis, Open Burning Official, it's a reappointment, it's a one-year term, it expires twelve fifteen two thousand and, so it'll be sixteen or seventeen? It's a two-year appointment, expires twelve fifteen two thousand seventeen. Yep. Motion by Len. Second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Joseph Zeal, planning and zoning, it's an appointment, the term is to expire at the next election, have a motion to do so. Motion by Len. Second by Al. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Sorry? Chair votes aye, motion passes four one zero. Note, Stephens, negative vote. And Ron Callahan, Memorial Day Committee, it's a reappointment, two-year term, expires twelve fifteen two thousand seventeen. Motion by Len. Second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda, item number fourteen, tax refunds and abatements. Filing over payment of tax payments in total of one hundred fifteen dollars seventy-five cents, need to be approved for refund in accordance to provisions of section twelve dash one twenty-nine of the Connecticut General Statutes, dated Seymour the fourteenth day of January two thousand fourteen, signed Dana Flock from the Tax Office. Do you have a motion to accept the tax collector's report as presented? Motion by Karen, second by Al. Just under discussion, everybody review, make sure there's no issues. Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda is item number fifteen, transfers. We have no transfers before us. Item number sixteen is correspondence. We have three things. Number one, which you receive tonight is a separate item, a letter to Susan DeBarber from Ron Skorat. Dear Mrs. DeBarber, please consider this, my letter of resignation as Democratic Registrar of Voters effective February first, two thousand sixteen. My deputy, Tom Lapaglia, will assume my position. Thank you, Ron Skorat. You have a copy of a letter to Chairman of the Board of Finance, William Zouicki, from Christine Syriak, Superintendent of Schools, and it presents their budget officially to the Board of Finance. Says, Dear Bill, the Seymour Board of Education, at a special meeting held on Thursday, January seventh, two thousand sixteen, approve the two thousand sixteen seventeen budget of thirty-two million nine hundred fourteen thousand four hundred and eight. This represents a one point zero three percent increase over the two thousand fifteen sixteen Board of Education budget. Additional documentation and details will be provided to the Board of Finance at our scheduled presentation on Wednesday, February third, two thousand sixteen. Please contact me should you have any questions prior to our February presentation. Sincerely, Christine Syriak. And then we have the check rounds. So that closes out correspondence. Next item on the agenda is item number seventeen, executive session. We're gonna make a small change to executive session, we're going to remove the personnel Giannati grievance issue, and we are going to go into executive session to discuss the Public Works Director position. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session at seven forty-seven PM, and to invite into executive session Chairman of the Public Works Board, Sean Walsh, and Town Council, Rich Paturla. Motion by Len, second by Al. All right, guys? Any comments? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero.